Are you ready, Jennifer? I'd like to call the March 3rd, 2020 DeBose City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise for the live side by Council member Jennifer.
United States of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Cliff, would you please take your role?
Councilmember Nikki.
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoed.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lego.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, consent, please add claims from March 5th, 2020 in the amount of $290,616.89. Claims for March 3rd, 2020 in the amount of $156,954.42. And also a reminder for folks that City of Carnation is hosting Jurassic Parliament for parlor nature training, Incarnation on April 8th at 5:30. So please let Joby know if you plan to attend. My, I'm planning to attend just a couple years ago, but I'm planning to attend. It's a really good, really good class. I mean, that's all I can really say, yeah. Adam Farland runs it and she's just absolutely incredible. So we'd like to go, please let Joby know. Did any councilmembers want to speak this evening? Councilmember McHenry. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
No.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
No.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We, under comments from the audience this evening, we have one person signed up to speak. Brittany Chris, if you could please approach the podium and provide your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Alright. Hello, Brittany Chris. Address is 27321, Northeast 143rd Place, in Dubal. I am here tonight on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm the owner of Advanced Science Photography and the manager of Dubal Printing Post. Just here to announce that the trick or treating for this year will be held on October 31st. There was a little bit of confusion about that. We wanted to do it on a business day or on actual Halloween. We opted to do it 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Let's see. And Thursday, March 5th, this Thursday, is the member meeting from 6:00 to 7:30, where the mayor will be presenting the state of Dubal. Anyone attending, it is $15 for chamber members and $20 for guests.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to schedule reports. And I apologize in advance, mine is going to be long because we've got a good emergency management update this evening. So first off on routine business, I attended the Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner at Leaven's last week. And King County Executive Dalpatine spoke. He talked a lot about the payroll tax bill in Olympia, which is still swirling around, and was very humble about communication to cities on that. That was really good to hear. Talked a lot, of course, about what he's doing in the county and top priorities. The next thing, we have the Sound Cities Executive Board meeting. So we discussed our 2020 retreat and now that the boards approved it, the executive boards approved it, I passed out our, the board's vision and guiding principles and mission to everyone because that's pretty much how we all try to operate in all of our meetings and it works really, really well. So just, it's food for thought, you can take it or pass it, but we all as a board felt that those are really strong principles, that we all believe in strongly. We also talked about sponsorships for SCA. Those are actually ahead of schedule, which is fantastic. Deanna Dawson and staff have been doing an amazing job of not only obtaining members and retaining them, but also getting sponsorship so that they can bolster their staff. They're more staffed up than they've ever been, which is a great benefit to all of our cities. We, we'll be working on organizing some women's leadership events this year. Last year it kind of got derailed with people's schedules, but we're looking to restart that. I mentioned in town, the potential transit levy and we talked about vision 2050. The SCA board will also be monitoring the county budget process really closely. The King County will be embarking on their buying of budget processing. So we look forward to having meetings with their budget staff and making sure that cities' priorities are being heard as well. That's the key of that meeting. Next was the PHSF Regional Council Executive Committee. 2050 was on the docket to vote, but it's not being voted on until next month because Snohomish County has brought forth some pretty big amendments. Right now, the recommended growth numbers for unincorporated Snohomish County is 6%, which they could barely fit with existing lots of investing and what have you. PSRC is proposing taking that down to 3%. The county is asking for a review to do 6% because I think they might actually be able to achieve that. I've definitely shared my concern with folks about, it's one thing for the county to have growth, but it's another thing, it's not focused on the I-5 corridor. So that means it's in the areas that are closer to us. And while it's only a couple thousand homes, that has a big impact on us, especially when you add it together with all the growth out there. My suspicion is that the, that the majority of the board will end up going with the county's recommendation after hearing from the county executive. I will be a no vote on that unless council directs me otherwise, but overall the plan is good. It's just, you know, you can get these last minute amendments. And I don't think I sent the email with amendments to folks, I'll send that to you guys hopefully this evening and then if you have any change in heart or feedback, let me know before the next meeting, which is three weeks from now. We have the North End Mayor's meeting this morning. We talked a bit about legislative session, but it was really dominated by what our citizens are doing to combat and manage the COVID-19 outbreak. We do have the next Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner coming up on March 18th and we'll have a legislative panel to recap of the legislative session. Of course, Thursday is Day of the City. I was asked by Carol Manoy to share with the city and the group that on March 14th, the United Way is going to be providing free task help from 9:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the American Legion Snohomie Valley Community Network Building, Incarnation. And we'll be, Sean Tozer, our Public Information Officer, will be posting that information on our Facebook page. I did, I thought I had brought it, but I did not bring the printout of the Sound Cities Association Legislative Update. Most of the bills that we are worried about are done for the year, which is good. And we'll continue to monitor that. There's just nine days left in session, so hopefully they'll get done soon. For folks that aren't aware, I am planning, unless the conference gets canceled, planning on traveling to Washington DC already Saturday night to attend the National League of Cities Conference and meet with our congressional representatives and their staff. I was debating on whether or not to go and after conversations with one of the district staff here, I decided that I did need to go because their DC staff likes, wants to see us in person at least once a year if we can get there. So I'm looking forward to that as long as it doesn't get canceled. They are assessing that at National League of Cities right now. That's my update for general city stuff. I wanted to give an update on COVID-19. I think that everybody was kind of waiting for quite a while after the first case appeared in Snohomish County and things really, to say the least, blew up early weekend. The first fatality happened in Kirkland at Emory Hospital. Since then, today's latest numbers are nine fatalities, 29 infected that are confirmed. They estimate that that number is much, much higher because of the stringent testing standards that the CDC had to begin with. They're going as fast as they can to expand the testing and get more facilities ready to do that. But part of the challenge right now is that there's likely, they estimate approximately 3,000 people, if you're looking at the scientists in the CIO who study, are likely to be walking around with the virus right now. And that's while it is good for 80% of the population, it's that 20% that we have to worry about that get hospitalized. So if you think about that in Dubal, if one out of every five people were hospitalized, even not at the same time, that's a staggering burden on our healthcare and emergency response systems. The city of Kirkland has been hit hard and this is part of the process. They have many firefighters quarantined, which is, I think was about half, you said it was about half quarter, quarter of their fire department. What that leads to is a ripple effect. The city of Redmond, who also serves us in emergency situations when our folks need help, are now staffed in the city of Kirkland while those folks are in quarantine. So it doesn't take long for our first responders and medical staff to be out of service and create a bigger challenge. So the state and the federal government's goal is to contain the virus. There is no way to stop it. It's here. It has been here and they're predicting that it will be here for quite a long time. The governor did declare state of emergency last weekend and on Monday morning, Sean and I have requested a meeting between Fire District, River View School District and the Cities of Carnation in Dubal. So we did get together and discuss what we were all doing and we'll be having a conference call tomorrow morning at 9:00 to go over updates. I think folks know there's been lots of rumors about potential, you know, people at school that have been out sick and things like that. And so we're working to make sure we keep our information coordinated. The Fire District shortly after that meeting implemented a policy of no public use of their facilities. So any rentals, parties or tours that they had have been canceled for the future. We immediately started receiving phone calls from the city after that message went out. We are holding off on booking additional reservations until we have a better idea of what the situation is going to look like. The primary reason being is sanitation because you really need at this point time to sanitize facilities after groups have used them and we just don't have the staffing to do it. We also had an internal emergency management leadership and so we are, we got an implementing what we call Phase One. Again, we're trying to watch what happens and not overreact, but also put protocols in place to protect our employees. So the first thing we're doing is implementing social distancing and Sean Tozer trained staff on that this morning. And part of that social distancing is to limit the amount of face-to-face exposure with people outside of our city buildings. So that means that where possible, Skype meetings will be held. So we're still getting the technology up and rolling for some of those things. Where possible, we're going to do Skype or go to web meeting. And also been discussing what would happen if we have a bigger outbreak and all public events are canceled, canceled, how do we hold a council meeting? The city has never had a continuity of operations plan, so this is one of those things that, you know, smaller cities usually don't have, but it's something that we have to look at right now as to how we manage that. So we've talked internally about if we do get in that situation, potentially having a place where people wanted to go, they can come and watch a video and we all stream it. That'll take a little bit of effort and I hope we don't get there, but that is part of the contingency. In addition, we have, are identifying additional employees that need VPN access. The city didn't have VPN for many years and we've been working with IT to get that implemented for key staff. We're expanding that right now in addition to moving out purchases, laptops for key employees like our Public Information Officer. If he gets quarantined, he's still asked to work. He's also our emergency management person. So as long as he's not ill, he'll be able to continue his work at home, which will help the city out. We've also been ordering supplies, so, you know, additional disinfecting latent supplies for those that handle cash and are asking the community that to, instead of coming to the city hall, there's something you can do online or by phone, please do that. The key here is that we really want to make sure that our staff stay healthy. The reality with this situation is that if one person in our waste water treatment plant gets sick, we might have no one to operate it if they all get quarantined. And so we want to do everything we can to avoid that occurring to Mayor Martin Remington's point in the committee of the whole earlier. Really, when you look at essential staff of the city, that's approximately half of our staff. And one person can literally cause everyone to, you know, at least have your staff to have to be quarantined. So we're going to do everything we can to avoid that. And in particular, one of the things that we will be doing is we're looking at a temporary policy for those that might be quarantined or ill. I've sent out a bunch of the staff that they're, they're sick, they're not going to work and if they come to work, they're, will be sent home. But there are newer employees and what have you that may not have sick leave, so we're working on some emergency options there because we don't, as administration, think our employees should be punished by a national viral situation. And that those folks, if they're forced to be in quarantine for two weeks, that's quite a long time to be sitting at home and unable to work. And there are employees that would be unable to work. I talked about social distancing training. Mayor Carnation and I, at a committee request yesterday, did a video to the communities just to highlight, you know, kind of key ways to take care of yourself. And again, it's like having the flu, you just wash your hands. Number one thing you can do is wash your hands and clean, disinfect surfaces and door knobs. And of course, if council didn't know this already, don't go to the doctor if you think you have it. Call the doctor and they will actually send someone to your house to test you if they think you're at risk. And they're trying to keep the risk factors as low as possible at the health facilities. Yesterday, I sent out to the President of Merchant Commerce some tips from the Department of Health on how businesses can handle this. We do know that, are already hearing that some of our businesses have been impacted and we want that impact to be as minimal as possible. So if you're healthy, go about your normal business. That said, as of today, public health is recommending that people over the age of 60 or underlying health conditions, avoid public events and public spaces. So that is a new change and an escalation from just 24 hours ago. I've already talked about the Fire District. Yesterday, the governor requested $100 million from the legislature to help jurisdictions with this. That request was granted by the House, so we'll go to the Senate now and we'll see what happens there. The state does have money, they have emergency reserves, they have other areas that they can pull the money from, but this is definitely one of the state's top priorities. So we talked a little about the sick leave, kind of a continuity of operations plan. Congressman Delaney, I'll be having a conference call with her tomorrow. She's contacting all the cities. The federal offices are trying to get money shaken free to help with the effort as well, being that King County is the epicenter and we just don't know how much it's going to cost. Mayor Martin Remington talked about the overtime in the city of Kirkland loan of staff and we very well could end up in that situation as well. It just all depends. Luckily, our police and our first responders of Fire District separate as far as budgets go, but again, if an employee gets exposed, it's, it's going to be costly. There's probably a couple more points I'm hoping I'm not missing here. There's really, really been a lot has gone on since Saturday and it's really kind of overwhelming to see how fast the situation has changed. I think the key for the public to remember is, it's not time to panic, it's time to take care of yourself and if you're sick, stay home. And if you think you have symptoms of the virus, it could be the flu, it could be the virus, it could be just a cold. But if you have been exposed to other people, call your doctor and get their recommendation on what to do. From my perspective, keeping our employees safe is a top priority at the city level and then trying to help the community keep our most vulnerable folks safe and those that are underlying conditions is really, really important. In closing, I did draft an emergency declaration over the weekend. I've been updating that over the last couple of days as the situation has changed and I do intend to sign that tonight. The purpose of that is these expenses that we are incurring that are not budgeted, while we might have to be able to amend the budget for them, since they're not budgeted, if we get over a certain threshold, say for example, we have to clean up a building for two or three and it costs us $20,000, $25,000, then that allows us to go ahead and make that and call the company in without having to get the bids and the RRP's and getting those facilities cleaned as soon as possible. So the point is specifically to address those issues should they arise. And then having a declaration, if there is state or federal money available for reimbursement, depending on our thresholds, we might be able to make some of that money back. It's never guaranteed, but it's really just a technical step to enable us to handle the situation better as it changes. Under DMC, I'll have to, I'll be providing a report to council on that in the first seven days. You'll need to ratify it at the next meeting, but it's a pretty routine thing. In fact, many cities that have not been directly impacted have already done this as well, just so that they can start mobilizing resources. So with that, I think, I think I covered everything. Did I miss anything that you're aware of, Mike? Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Sorry, I hope I was thorough, but not too thorough. Alright, so moving on to council reports. Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank councilmember Napland for covering the last council chat. It sounds like there was a lot of good conversation there. Council chats came from a realization of the city council that not everyone can attend council meetings and we have a desire to provide a deeper level of engagement beyond the public comment period. So our next upcoming council chat is Friday, March 20th, from 4:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. at CC's in downtown. And the one after that is Saturday, April 18th, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Rustic Cabin Coffee. And there's a couple more dates, we'll keep updating them, they're on the city's Facebook page as well. And I have sent the original list to council members. If you need an update, I can resend that out. Let me know if you can make any of them and I'll put you down. I'm always happy to step off if there's three other people that want to get on, so that's what I have.
Any questions for councilmember McHenry? Seeing none, move on to are there any council committee reports this evening? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to presentations. We have Waste Management here to provide our 2019 annual report as required by our agreement with the city.
Alright, good evening, council. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Marcela Manabusen and as the mayor indicated, I'm from Waste Management and here to present our 2019 annual report. So thank you for having me. You have the full annual report in your packet, so I'm just going to cover some highlights and if you have any questions, please let me know. So really, as your community engagement and sustainability partner, we wanted to highlight the events that we attend in 2019 or attended in 2019 to connect with residents. So we were at four community events to provide recycling education for residents. We provided over $7,000 in sponsorship and in-kind services to support key community events here in Dubal, Dubal Days, the farmer's market, which in 2019, we provided weekly collection for the farmer's market to help increase the sustainability of that program. So that was great. Summer Stage, Sand Blast, and we also do the firefighter pancake breakfast, which is a zero-waste event. So that's really fun. So we compost all the, all the food and try and recycle as much material as possible. We do multifamily and commercial outreach and so in 2019, we provided door-to-door recycle education at Valley View Apartments as well as the Park Apartments and we visited all of the commercial businesses in Dubal. We're an active member of the chamber, so I've been attending all the monthly meetings and so that's been great to be able to connect with the business leaders in the community as well. Few places you can see us around town. This year, highlighting our multifamily outreach in the community. Here you can see the zero-waste breakfast photo that we have, that was really great. Just kind of skipped it through. I had a presentation, but it's, the PowerPoint isn't here, so I apologize for that.
The presentation is probably the next thing down, so if you keep scrolling down, oop, I think I clicked over into that, which is what you have.
It is, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. So these are the highlights I'm covering here. Again, you have the full, that full 10-page, nine or 10-page report as well, if you want a deeper look. So here we're highlighting the diversion rate in Dubal, so that's the amount of recycle and compost that's kept out of the landfill. So you can see as a, as a whole, the community is at about 40% of diverting all materials out of the landfills. Residentially, our residential customers in Dubal are diverting about almost 60% of their waste. So, you know, that's more than half, that's really great. All the education that we're doing, we're trying to continue to promote that and increase that. Things that you can expect, you know, for me as the contract manager and, you know, to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing in the contract, we send monthly reports and our annual report to the city where you can see our customer counts, any complaints or inquiries that are coming to us in the month, recycling summaries, any outreach and events that we've attended. We try to be very proactive and so I'm here this evening to present the annual report. We host and attend events and make presentations and then we hold inclement weather updates in the fall to get ready for the winter. And so this year, I met with Sean Tozer and sent my presentation to Steve as well. In 2019, we had snow again in February, it was pretty significant. You know, I'm a Washington native, so I don't know that I've seen two weeks of snow like that in this area. So in order to sort of prepare for, you know, the upcoming winter, we made some significant improvements to our, our website, so we're able to share those with Sean. We put those updates as well in the city newsletter, so I worked with sharing with that. And so we have FAQs, a lot of customers ask questions. Why can't you run within snowing? Why can't you attach a snow plow in front of your truck? Things like that. So we developed an FAQ so the customers could always have that information at their fingertips, as well as if there is an event, how do we store extra material until, you know, our trucks aren't running again? And then this, in January, you know, I communicated when there were events happening. I know in Dubal, we have service on Fridays and so at the time Friday got here, we were pretty much okay and on regular schedule, but, you know, that's just part of our contract management that we let the city know what's going on. This is kind of an update, so China Sword was a, a big topic that started 2017, really hit hard in 2018. Still here in 2019, contamination is still an issue, processing costs are still high and market values are still very low. But what Waste Management, you know, wants the city of Dubal to know is that we're committed to recycling. We're the nation's largest recycler, so we've invested over $100 million in innovation and infrastructure in 2019. So it's not going away. We're going to keep preaching our recycle right principles, keeping things loose, empty, that kind of thing, so we can keep recycling. And then just looking ahead for, what does that mean for 2020? So we're going to continue to deploy our award-winning outreach for Dubal residents and businesses, helping to reduce waste and clean up the recycling, still a very big priority. We're investing in a smart truck technology, which is a system of cameras that go on the front of our truck and where the material is offloaded into, so we can help engage with resident, well, right now it's just commercial, so commercial businesses, multifamily, we can help engage them on what recycled materials don't belong in the container. We'll be at the chamber meeting this Thursday, so, you know, you'll see me there in the community. We'll be part of the Villaterreary booth for the Dubal Earth and Arbor Day Festival, so that's coming up in April. And also providing a recycle presentation at the chamber meeting in, in April as well. in April as well. And we'll still be contributing financially and doing our in-kind services to key community events because we are part of the Dubal business community and it's very important to us. And that is it for me. I think I went too far on your screen.
Oh, that's on the X.
Sorry. Thank you.
Questions? Mayor, if I may.
More of a comment, I don't know why, but over the years, we've gotten a chance to actually talk and meet the gentlemen that both operate for garbage pickup as well as recycling, just really nice folks. I mean, down-to-earth, nice, even tell how efficient they are picking things up, but it meant a lot to me to just get to know them, in some cases even their families, and these are hard-working, caring folks that, and I'm just real proud of that. We're always sad when they rotate because it's just like, you know, a friend or neighbor that's leaving, but I hope you can pass that on for us as well, how special and personal you are. One question about, especially with this China Sword, I know that we're looking for other alternatives, both in modernizing and how we recycle internally here in the U.S., but have, has a alternative been selected outside the U.S. in terms of someone else that wants to pick up that recycling from China?
There have been several other markets that have been pursued internationally. Waste Management in 2019 committed to, as far as plastic recycling, only looking for domestic markets, so only things in North America for plastics. So that will, you know, help us to be proactive and alleviate sort of getting in that position that we did with China Sword where we were forced to find other places to go and it ended up being more costly.
Well, thank you.
So I got really excited when the good weather happened and I pruned, I just went to town and I put my yard waste at the curb and somehow my neighbors thought I knew what I was doing and they all put their yard waste at the curb. And then we realized, oh, you haven't started once a week to pick up yet, yard waste. So I'm wondering when that is, just there might be other people that don't remember when that is.
Yeah, so the weekly pickup resuming is in March, so this Friday will be the first week we sort of pick up and it'll be a week thereafter.
Okay, so it's always March 1st, it always starts in March?
Yes, it only goes every other week, December through February, so we're starting first Friday in March, we're back on that weekly schedule.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, I always appreciate you coming. Moving on, we do not have any public hearings this evening, but we do have a few items of new business. First is Agenda Bill 20-14, authorize the mayor to sign amendment to interlocal agreement between City of Dubal and River View School District for board reviews for discussion and/or decision, and this is going to be led by our clerk, Ms. Whiteoff.
Good evening, mayor and council, Jody Whiteoff, city clerk. Before you tonight is proposed amendments to the interlocal agreement that allows us to use the room that you're sitting in right now. Staff was notified that the overtime rate for the janitorial services that we pay after 8:30 PM was going up to $45, it actually had already gone up to $45, and when we noticed it on an invoice, I questioned it and there, so I just explained that we needed to amend the ILA. I did do a little bit of digging into what we've already spent, it's approximately $180 more per year for overtime, could be on average go about 30 minutes past 8:30. Some days are better than not, so that's the average for 2019. The budget they currently have should be able to absorb that overtime, especially since we've already had a few of our meetings in the DMC. Other minor amendments proposed here tonight are just amending the contact information for the city and also just some minor grammatical things. They used to call the rooms that we have the cow in, they called them professional development rooms, so everywhere in the ILA, it's referred to as the PD room and now it's professional learning, so we've changed it to PL, so just minor. That's it. Any questions?
Councilmember Ho.
So when did they increase the fees for after-hours?
So we noticed it, they did some staff changes in the, at the end of the previous full year, around March, April, they changed some staffing around and the person who took over was a little bit behind on doing their invoicing and so we got all of our invoices from April through August at one time and as I was reviewing them and kind of auditing them to make sure that we were being charged appropriately is when I noticed. So I can't guarantee that it wasn't before that, but that's when I noticed, was in August. So they went ahead and honored the ILA at least April through current, until the ILA gets amended. So we only paid the $30 per hour at least April through now and then once this is approved on both sides, then the new rate will go into effect.
Any other questions? Would council like to take this on this evening or move it to the next meeting? If that's what council would like, I would be happy to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Bill 20-14, authorizing the mayor to sign amendment to interlocal agreement between the City of Dubal and River View School District for board reviews.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next is Agenda Bill 20-15, authorizing mayor to sign contract amendment with Master Butler for window gutter cleaning services for 2020. This is for discussion and/or decision, also led by Ms. Whiteoff.
Good evening again, mayor and council, Jody Whiteoff, city clerk. Before you this evening is an amendment to Agenda, or to contract number 2019-25 with Master Butler. They do our window and gutter cleaning for all of the city facilities. We did a one-year contract at first to, we went through a bid process and I was quite astounded at some of the results. These were the lowest and most responsive bidder and because of the dollar threshold, we were, it was within the mayor's authority, signing authority for the one year and we kind of wanted to see if we liked their service and if it was satisfactory or not. So now we're good with them, we like them. If you could, if you read the memo to the file that Sherry James created, they're very satisfied with their service. In order to extend it one more year, we would either have had to go back out to bid and reissue a one-year contract or amend this one, which now is outside the mayor's authority because the total amount of the contract is now double what it was. As you can see from the Agenda Bill, last year we spent 5761, the contract is not to exceed 6,000 per year. So with council's blessing, we will continue using their services for the next year and then the plan is for service contracts such as this, we want to follow the biennial budget, so we will go out to bid again probably around August so that we have a solid number in time for the budget process and that will be a two-year contract, so we don't have to do this again.
Any questions? I just want to compliment Sherry on working on this, I know she worked hard the first year, I ran into her one, one of the days when she was working on this and she also shared with me how expensive some of the other quotes were and she, you know, found someone local, which I think is a win-win for us and so anyway, I just want to compliment her on the hard work she put into this and also I just appreciate the idea of putting things on a biennial schedule to just do a recheck and I think we touched on that at another meeting about, another contract, what was that? I can't remember, we just talked about it. But it reminded me that we have that HVAC contract that is another one that, it was so old that we couldn't even find the contract and so that would be one that I don't know how that works and it's a little bit off-topic, but just, I love that idea of looking at contracts every couple of years, just to...
We want to develop an internal policy and identify which ones are for two years, year, five years, 10 years and create a schedule because with so many, you don't have a contract management individual and it's segregated amongst departments, making it very difficult to track and so we're, we'll be working on developing an internal policy to specify those kind of, for depending on the type of contract size of contract that comes back for council, approval as far as rebidding and going through the RFP processes again. The HVAC that was amended, I believe, they were small contracts within spending authority and those, it came out that those, they weren't back doing the services that they were supposed to be doing. And we obviously had an amazing deal on that when you start to look at other HVAC companies, but that said, that might be one of those rare cases that it's twice not twice yet. Our issue with HVACs is that they're already past their useful service life and so unless we're going to replace them all, it'll be difficult to find somebody to service them again. So that's a, that's a little bit trickier, but in general, we really want to see policies come in place where these contracts are having intervals and so we're not letting things go for five, 10, 15 years. I think this is the first time that anyone to remember actually gone out for a trade RFP. I don't know if when our previous firm was originally signed up, the city even did that, it may have just been signing up for our services. So that's an important aspect of getting the intervals.
Thank you for reminding me, it was attorney services. I couldn't remember what it was that I came up with. Anyway, I just want to say I'm comfortable leaving this forward tonight and not how everyone else feels, but I am comfortable with it. Any other discussion? You have a motion?
I move we approve Agenda Bill 20-15A, authorize the mayor to sign a contract amendment with Master Butler for window gutter cleaning services for 2019.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill AB 20-16, approval and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment of understanding and use procedures lease agreement between Jeff Davis and the City of Dubal for the use of the Doorway Farmstead Community Garden for discussion and/or decision. Mr. Lenishewski?
Third patch, I have had any questions?
Okay. Does council have any further questions on this one? Seeing none, go to Councilmember Napland.
I just, when I read it again tonight, I saw that the 18, I think it's 18-acre portion was excluded from this. Do we have any interest in that or is it just sitting unused, that's all?
Good evening, mayor and council citizens, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. We did put an RFP for the P-Patch in a food forest and the farm itself ended up receiving any action on the farm. Overtime, there may be, you know, opportunities if we do enter into contract with Jeff, but we would work with the current tenant if we so inclined to figure that out too.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve AB 20-16A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment of understanding and use procedures lease agreement with Jeff Davis and the City of Dubal for use of the Doorway Farmstead Community Garden.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Davis, look forward to seeing what you do out there.
Thank you.
Last item of new business on the agenda is AB 20-17, Community Development Staffing for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Thomas did bring this up at the council retreat last week, it seemed like there was consensus to move forward. The whole purpose is reclassifying positions to assist the planning department with their burgeoning need for planning assistance, which includes taking an admin assistant and putting it back into the planning side. So does council have any more questions or discussion on this item or do you want to take a vote or do you want to move it to the next meeting? Mayor, if I may.
I suggest we go ahead and move forward, that was the sense we had at our council retreat on Friday and with that, I move that we approve Agenda Bill 20-17, Community Development Staffing, to approve the plans presented to us for staff, addition to staffing.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you, that is critically important for our operations, appreciate council moving that forward quickly. We have one item of unfinished business, AB 20-09, approved resolution, approving Phase Two, The Ridge at Big Rock Final Wall Plaid, SU 08-001, for discussion and/or decision. Mr. Lenishewski?
Good evening again, mayor and council, Steve Lenishewski. So in your packet is the completed documentation for the final plat of The Ridge at Big Rock, Phase Two, actually As and Bs aren't the L's, it's Ones and Twos, so my apologies on that. If you recall, this is one piece of the larger pie between Third Avenue and Big Rock Road. Phase One, completed 27 single-family residential units, the commercial paths on the south side of Big Rock Road, as well as one condo parcel, including 18 units. So this phase is what you see there between Third Avenue and Big Rock Road, bound to the north and west. There would be 41 single-family units in there, six condo lots, that will total 58 units for a total of 99 in this phase. Project has completed its required improvements, we are working with the applicant on their transportation impact, impact fee credits, their park impact fee credits for the park yet to be built in the Walden phase and utilities are up and running and are ready to go, long string plies are paid, paperwork is processed.
Any questions for Mr. Lenishewski? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I make motion on AB 20-09B, that we approve Phase Two, Ridge at Big Rock Final Plaid.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we have no further business and if there are no objections, we are adjourned.